We're in session for the workshop. Do you have any public comments?
No one has signed up, sir.
Okay, all right. Then let's move to 2A. Mr. Hoppe?
Yes, sir. As we had mentioned to you before, we've got today is really focused, this is your second budget workshop of the summer. Today is really focused around water and sewer fund and then some of the other auxiliary funds. We'll talk a little bit about hotel motel and golf fund and some of the other smaller funds, but a big focus will really be centered around water and sewer fund. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Julie Behrens.
Okay. So looking at the calendar, you guys have seen this before. This is on page two of your handout. Just to let you know kind of where we are, so our workshop today, and then we'll be working through the certified roll, so that's coming up. And then on the 30th, we will file the proposed budget. So, and then a few other dates there that are important. On the 10th, we'll present the proposed budget at the budget meet, at the council meeting, and then also the proposed tax rate. So those things coming up. So just an overview of the water fund. It is the second largest fund and gets a lot of attention, you know, just because of the nature of the purposes that it serves. In this presentation, there are some proposed changes to utility rates. Those were per a 2019 rate study, for those of you who remember that, and we'll talk about that a little bit, too. Our largest operating expense category, just like most others, is personnel, and then utilities and maintenance after that. The largest division within the fund is water production, so the producer of all of our water and water systems and maintaining our water system there, too. Currently, the budget for water fund is balanced. We still are looking at a few things that could impact that a little bit, but we don't have any reason to believe that that won't be balanced. Moving on to revenues, you can see just kind of how our revenues break out. So looking at total revenue of 13.7 million, that's up 4.7% over fiscal year '21 original budget, not over the estimated. Reuse sales account for 1% of that, water sales, and then waste disposal fees for septic haulers is something a lot of people don't really know about or it's not on the forefront, but that is a large part of our other category, and they've continued to grow over the past few years. So you can see the breakout there. Sewer is 44%, water sales is 49%. The expenditure side, like I said, right now, we're balanced. Our expenditures are also 13.7 million. That's 4%, 4.7% above the '21 original budget, as I said. Street use fee of 4% of revenues, and all those are indicated here on the graph. And just like the general fund, we're averaging right now, within the budget, a 3% payroll expense increase on the water fund for personnel, keeping in mind, we're still doing some evaluation of cola, maybe a cola merit mix. So that is one of the factors that could affect the overall fund, so we're still working through that process a little bit. We have had numbers come back, thank you, she fixed it. We have had numbers come back on health insurance, so I know that y'all have heard, we're looking at a 5% increase on health insurance, so.
And going back to kind of the prepared or proposed budget or draft budget, that you said it's balanced, but there are still some factors, but not probably major, that we would consider.
Right.
What are those factors?
Mostly looking at the personnel, like how are we going to do merit increases? Are we going to look at a cola increase, or is it going to be a blend of those things? So really, it's just narrowing down how we're going to look at that process and how that'll affect the overall budget.
Got you.
But we're still working through that process, and it's an all-day, every-day, things change pretty much by the minute, so we're constantly working on those drafts.
Okay. So we've got, obviously, the, our water fund employees and our general fund employees, we treat the same from a payroll standpoint. And so because we still have revenue projections that we're working through on the general fund side, that influences the water fund side. Does that make sense?
Yeah, 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 got you. Okay.
Okay. Talking a little bit about the rate structure, and, you know, just wanted to go over this a little bit because some of you weren't here during that process. So we did a very extensive rate study, hired an outside company to do that process, and that's pretty much what their focus is, on what rates are needed to cover fixed expenses, to cover, you know, maintenance expenses, just regular operations, and then also constant changes in the system and growth to the system and those things. So we spent about four to six months, I guess, really working through that process, and we did make some changes to our rate structure in the FY '20 budget to really focus more on a stable, or at least stabilizing our revenue a little bit, so that it's not so weather-dependent. It still is, and there's still a lot of variations in our rate structure, but we did, you know, do a few things to help stabilize that a little bit. And then, of course, we didn't do anything in 2021, so we didn't have any rate increases at all citywide because of that. But in the water fund, you know, our expenses are overwhelmingly fixed, so we can't control the things that have to be done on a day-to-day basis. So if you can't control the expenses and your revenue is variable, you know, you can get yourself into trouble sometimes. So we're really trying to push toward that more fixed rate structure a little bit. So council did approve that new rate structure with the intention of slight, you know, increases each year instead of such large increases after we waited several years to do that increase, and again, we didn't do that in 2021. Want to talk about the tiers?
Yeah, so we just wanted to provide a little bit of an example in regards to the tiered rate structure and how that works. So basically, you know, you've got the 0 to 1,000 tier that's built into the base rate, and then you show the next tier up is the 1,000 to the 6,000. And so every 1,000 gallons within that 6,000 gallon component is charged $3.41. And when you get over that 6,000, that next tier, the 6,000 to 15,000, each rate that, each 1,000 gallons then is $4.42. So again, it just continues to step up, and it's really a conservation-based rate structure. So the more that you use and the higher user you are, the more you're going to be charged, and that's because we're basically, right, well, and we're having to hold water in reserve, right? And we're having to create bigger water supplies. And quite frankly, a lot of that, those higher-level users, a lot of that is going towards irrigation use, it's not necessarily for potable use. And so, again, just wanted to provide a little bit of an example here before we get into the rates, on kind of how that continues to step up, the more you use, on a monthly basis. And I think it is also important to highlight that our average user is around 5,500 gallons, and so they're really being charged at that lowest tier rate of that $3.41. That's the vast majority of our customers out there.
Okay, so the next slide is moving on to what we're proposing as, as water rates, again, following suit with our rate study in 2019. And again, looking at the tiered rate, so you can see that what we're proposing is a per-account increase on the base rate, remembering that that base rate does include 1,000 gallons. So the idea here, when we added the 1,000 gallons to the base rate, was that those, you know, single households, those kind of things that aren't using water, aren't going to feel any
Right.
... large effects to any kind of rate change. So you can see, kind of just going through it, since we're proposing the increase on the base rate, and we didn't do an increase last year, that's why that 82 cents is our proposed increase, but we're proposing zero increase on that first tier. So that way, your average customer, they are going to see an increase on their base rate, but then if they do go into that 1,000 to 6,000 gallon tier, they're not also seeing an additional rate increase on their regular water use. So it was just a little bit of an offset in a way to, you know, provide, you know, a little bit more of a fixed revenue stream, but then also give a little bit of a break to those customers who are staying in that lower tier.
And again, these are the users that, you know, typically are on fixed income, and they're not, they're very low-scale users. They may be one single individual that lives in a home, and, you know, they're using less than 1,000 gallons per month, and so there essentially is no increase on their tier structure right now. It's just simply the base rate because it just costs of the system, the cost of, you know, doing business.
And you can see that I provided on the right-hand side how many customers, this is May's data, so how many customers are using water in each of these tiers right now. You know, keeping in mind that it may consumption, we did have some watering going on, so you can see a little bit, maybe what I would say is higher on the, on the higher-tier side than would be, say, in February, but at least gives you a really good idea. And if you look at that 4,800 customers there, again, they're falling into that 1 to 6,000 gallon usage, so we're not looking at making an increase on that at all.
So again, if you look at the percentages on the far right, the bulk of our customers fall into that 1,000 to 6,000 gallon. And then if you actually lump that in to the 0 to 1,000, you're talking about, you know, almost 70% of customers will not see any rate increase in regards to the tier structure, simply the base rate.
Right.
Which is really a catch-up because we're two years behind on implementing the rate study.
Right.
And then just going through the tiers, you can see a 2% rate increase on each of the additional tiers above that. And again, just, you know, following with our, you know, master plan of water conservation, with higher rates being at, at a higher tier, so. Any questions on that before I move on? Make sure that's clear. Okay.
The, it's on the side, it looks like it says the Curville 2050.
It is a Curville 2050 item. So in, in our strategic plan, it specifically talks about finding ways to promote water conservation, and we, and again, through our rate study, that was one of the ways that we looked at doing it. So if you're using more water and you're paying more, you're more likely to do a little bit more conservation than you would if you were charged the same amount of, the same price as if you were using 1,000 gallons of water, so.
The cheapest way for us to increase supply is to conserve supply, right? And so a conservation-based tier structure helps us with that.
Moving on to sewer, so same kind of concept here with obviously fewer tiers. So sewer is not metered, so we have to have a way to come up with a reasonable solution to charge for sewer rates. So the way the city does it is through a process we call winter averaging, which most of you are probably familiar with, but the idea is that we're using the three months in which most users use the least amount of water, and using that average to determine the upcoming year's water, sewer rate. So when you get your bill in January, February, and March, that's going to be for December, January, and February consumption, because remember, we bill a month behind. So those three months out of the year, we really encourage citizens to do a lot of water saving so that they're, if they're watering during that period of time, they're not impacted on their sewer rates. So that's why we choose those months, and that's pretty standard industry-wide because sewer's not metered.
The thought is, that's the months you're least likely to be, have irrigation needs.
Yeah. So just giving everybody the benefit of the doubt on, you know, giving them every opportunity to conserve water and get their sewer bill a little bit lower, and, and understanding that irrigation's not going into the sewer, so, you know, we wouldn't want to use July rates for that. So the next slide is just looking at a combined total. So this is with our proposed increase. You can see a current line as far as what each user is paying right now. This is water and sewer combined, and then the orange is where our average user is. So you can see that with this proposed increase, on an average of 5,500 gallons, that customer is seeing an overall increase of $2.05. So, and then we just did some little different tiers here to see, you know, where different people fall, so you could see how the increases would be affected. No questions on that slide?
Just an interesting observation. When I was raising four kids on Galbraith, my water bill, because that's really all I care about, is what am I paying every month? And I was paid somewhere between $60 and $70. Now, through the course of the last 20 years, the rates have gone up steadily. I'm still paying between $60 and $70 20 years later.
Less laundry.
Yeah. So it's still, I mean, it goes to show you, over time, it's gone up, but it's just gone up just a little bit.
That's right. Yep, just steady, and that's really the council feedback, and we'll talk about it on the next slide, but the council feedback's several years ago, was, let's, let, allow, the system certainly is going to increase in expenses, right? Chemicals go up, payroll expenses go up, but let's have consistent increases rather than these kind of real knee-jerk, you know,
Yeah.
10% one year, and then,
Exactly.
You know, three years where it's zero, and 15% one year. That's, that's not really palatable to either side, because certainly the customer doesn't like it to ebb and flow like that, and it's difficult from a system standpoint of being able to have some degree of predictability.
Now, that, there was a study done, right? We talked about?
Yes.
Yes, in 2019.
Did I get a copy of that?
Yes.
I couldn't find it on the website.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And how long are we also projecting these increases to continue for?
So that was a five-year rate study. In fact, it looked at out even a little further into
They did.
Some 10-year expenses, although we recognize that, you know, a big part of that is a master planning effort, which, you know, we've embarked on right now from the water, wastewater side, so. But really, it was predominantly focused on the next five years.
Okay.
Yeah. With the idea that you're going to update it, you know, periodically, you know, continue to look at it, make sure it's relevant.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get you a copy.
Thank you.
So going right into multi-year rate plans, so again, we did hear council say that they would like to look at, you know, the possibility of proposing a multi-year rate plan ordinance that would put basically that trajectory kind of into place. Obviously, the council looks at rates every year as part of your fee schedule, and so it absolutely could be amended, but it provides a couple different things. It provides the consumer with advance notice that, yeah, we're, the council's intent is for there to be small increases, you know, going forward. And then it also provides the city some degree of, you know, surety that, long-range planning and being able to look at kind of what that, you know, forecasting ability is. And that concept does match with the recommendations of the 2019 rate study. And so again, council provided feedback that y'all wanted to look at it, and so we've, you know, kind of taken a stab at what that might look like. You know, as you can see through here, I know it's a lot of detail on there, but basically it's around 2% on the increases, you know, going forward over those next four or five fiscal years. But again, just modest increases rather than kind of up and down, up and down.
What has the percentage been in the past?
On the historical rate?
Yes.
We'd have to pull that data. I know that there was a
We did four, I believe, in 2020, but I'll go back and get that, that's in the rate study.
Okay.
And then prior to that, you know, it hadn't been raised in a while, and so we actually did some, some background checking. We have all of that within our rate study.
Yeah, we'll pull that history for you guys.
Sure. This next slide really was just more for informational purposes, just to let you know kind of what resources we have on the utility side to help customers who may struggle month to month, or may just once in a while, you know, have a shortfall in revenue at their own household so that they can get some assistance. So we do collect voluntary donations from our citizens through our neighborhood assistance program, so you'll see on the bottom of your bill each month, it has a place for you to donate a dollar or, or whatever, and that is pretty widely used, you know, on a voluntary basis. It generates about $2,000 a month. It's been as high as 2,500 since I've been here. And then we send a check over to Christian Assistance Ministry, to CAM, and then they use that as part of their water assistance.
Okay.
And that is used for, on the water sewer side only that that's generated from. But then we also, but we have an agreement with them that all of that is used specifically for water sewer. St. Vincent de Paul also provides a really large amount each year of assistance for utilities and, and other bills for citizens, and we work with them to, on a voucher program, so they send us a voucher basically saying we are going to pay X number of dollars on this account, and then we credit that account.
Okay.
And then we get a check from them once a month. So it's an after-the-fact program that we have with them also. Same thing with Salvation Army.
Okay.
Let me say that I appreciate the, the desire and, and action to help some low-income individuals, because more, that's more of a factor than we would like to think it is in our community, but it's very real. And through COVID, K-Pub has done that funding for utilities at St. Paul, and we're looking at, do we continue that or whatever, but it, it's helped a lot of people.
It's a lot more needed than some people might recognize,
Sure.
And sometimes people don't want to tell us that they need the help, so our staff are really good at, you know, asking questions, how can we help, and getting them resources that they can decide to use on their own if they so choose, so.
I'm surprised and pleased that it's at 2,000.
I looked yesterday, and we're already at 2,000 for this year, as a matter of fact, so it's going to exceed that for this year from donations from citizens.
If, if people have that, your bill is paid automatically, how can you set it up to do an extra dollar?
Let me check that. I'll, I'll get you an answer on that. Then that may be within our system somehow, but let me check that.
Thanks.
Yeah, I can probably, that is a good point. We can add it on as a contract. So yeah, let me check that. And then we also have a system for customers who get paid once a month, so whether they're on social security or retirement-based, or, I mean, even for teachers, a lot of times, they can come in and let us know they just get paid once a month, and we can set them up so that if their due date happens to fall prior to their payday, they're not getting penalized for that. So we update those annually with those customers, but we do have quite a few people that are on that program as well. Any questions about anything water-related that we've talked about so far?
Okay, we're rolling into the Water Capital Projects. There is a sheet in all the stack of papers, and for the Water Capital Projects, we're not going to go through in detail all the projects, but we did want to list out what's picking up in FY '22. So go down and list on the slide. We have the Guadalupe River Utility Crossing Project. That is a Texas Water Development Board Disaster Recovery Grant-funded project. We have the NAP and Jefferson Interceptor Project that is being funded by the remaining Legion Lift Station funds. That is also a Texas Water Development Board grant. Lowest Tank and Pump Rehab, we, that is some old bond funds we are reusing and getting that paid through. We have the second phase of the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Project, which is AMI, and Julie headed that up. That was an approved project in the FY '21 budget, a total of $735,000. So we finished Phase One really well, and probably a little bit under budget, and we're kicking off the second phase this year. We are anticipating the Water Street Water Main Enhancement Project to kick off in FY ' '22. We do have some water well sites that we want to look at, which is the Travis Street Well, Methodist Encampment, and the H Street Well Sites. We are fixing to take off and repair the Westminster Street reconstruction on the pavement, so while we're in there, we want to get in and do the water utilities as well. So that's definitely a project we want to take on. And then there's some potential generator projects. We're looking at some CDBG grant funding for those, then that's across the city. Any questions on those projects?
So we included with you guys, there's two really big sheets. These are usually included within the budget book. This front one is related to water fund, but we also did include the big sheet related to general fund capital projects. And so these are the bulk of the projects that, you know, when we give you that 11-by-17 monthly update, this is the vast majority of where they're coming from. We do have a few other capital projects that may come out of some other funds this year, like Library Memorial, for instance, and we'll talk about those a little bit later, but wanted to go ahead and, we're not planning on going through these in great detail with you guys, because we did go through a lot of that status list last week in the workshop, but we just kind of want to get these in front of you. If you have any questions, feel free to just contact me, and we can kind of talk through, you know, how we've developed these. And again, these are drafts, so we'll try to hone in on, on them as best we can before the proposed budget, but, you know, they evolve, especially the timelines. You know, what falls in this fiscal year versus next fiscal year, some of that's a little bit of a guessing game, and really depends somewhat on construction schedules and the general construction industry and funding, so.
Okay, and reviewing projects, we have a lot of projects that come up and they need funding. We try to pay cash as much as we can for those items, but sometimes it's not feasible, so we have to sell debt. So FY '22 debt payment schedule is looking, total payments for interest and principal is $4,313,000. That value is 31.5% of our water fund revenues, which is down nine basis points from last year of 32.4, and that's still under our policy limit of 35%. We do not anticipate selling any new debt anytime soon on the water side. We did just do a refunding of the 2013 and '12 series at the beginning of fiscal year '21, so looks like we're going to be pretty steady for quite some years to come, nine years or so. That's all I have on that. Okay, rolling into the water asset replacement. Earlier this month, Guillermo had discussed our asset replacement schedule with the implementation of our enterprise lease program. We currently lease three vehicles on the water fund side, and that's our water production truck, our water reclamation truck, and our environmental lab truck. We do plan to add a new vehicle to that, a new truck for the water distribution department, so that total annual cost of leases would be approximately $28,643. A much-needed piece of equipment in the water distribution department is a Bobcat. The specs came back on that at $32,000. Our old one, the current one we have is a 2004, so it's about 17 years old, so it's in need of replacement, and that's digging up those water lines for water main repairs and whatnot. So overall, total asset replacement budget for fiscal year '22 is $60,643. Looks like from our last presentation, our fund balance in there was 189, so we have plenty to spend on that. Any questions?
We'll move on to the hot fund. So we're proposing for FY '22 that we take this Convention and Visitors Bureau back to their pre-COVID level, which was $990,000 a year, that we give to them to basically go out and promote Curville. And so I've, if you, you know, have, we're at the CVB last week, you know what Julie Davis and her team is proposing, and I think they have a lot of good things on the horizon coming, and I think that, you know, we can tell just from looking at revenues on the, on the tourism side that, that we're doing really well here in Curville. So what we're proposing is some funding for events like River Fest, Fourth on the River, which was a really big success this year, Museum of Western Art, their regional exhibits, triathlon, and then some sports tournament funding that we typically do every year. We also have an agreement with Playhouse 2000 that we provide them with $100,000 in funding every year with the understanding that they match up to $50,000 of that in donations, and so far, they've already met that for this year, and they are really good about providing us that documentation before we move on with that second half of their funding. $60,000 for the arts co-op, some possible public installation of art, public art support. Not quite sure what that's going to look like that, but it is on the, on the horizon. And then some transfers in, these are typical ones that you see for staffing related to tourism in the general fund, and then a possible tourism study. But the good news here, and you can see that our proposed revenue for FY '21 is, is going to exceed our budget, and keeping in mind, we were pretty conservative with fiscal year '21 because we didn't really know what to expect, but it's looking really good. The other thing that I wanted to point out here was, we now have, on this slide, it says 48 short-term rental payers. That was in June, we're up to 52 now. So those are people that are actually, we know about, they're out there, and they're, they're paying occupancy tax for their short-term rentals, not necessarily have a conditional use permit yet, or maybe they don't need one, but, but they are, you know, doing what they're supposed to on the reporting side.
Julie, that includes the River Trail cottages.
This number does not include that. Any that are multi-units like that, I actually pull them out for reporting purposes and treat them as a hotel. So River Trail cottages, and then also in the ETJ, the Old River Road RV Resort, they have multiple units, and so I actually treat them as an individual entity for tracking purposes.
They do use that booking mechanism.
That's right.
But, you know, it's about 20, 30 units, and so we do pull those out intentionally so we can track really more the one-off.
Right, so these will be individual.
That's correct. That's correct. So those are, they're individuals, and we've worked with a lot of them just from an education standpoint, you know, for what they need to do for that. But we use a company, it's actually a scraping company, and their job is to go out and identify short-term rentals that are being advertised in our community, and then they send them to us, and then we do some research to see, are they compliant with what we're, what our requirements are or not? And then if they're not, a lot of times, they just don't know what their requirements are, and so we send them, you know, some education information, talk them through what that process looks like, and then get them, you know, on the right path going forward. And that's, that's been successful, and we've been able to make some good contacts through that process, too, and I think the word is kind of spreading through that. But we've had really good luck, and we've doubled our, our revenue in two years from our occupancy tax from short-term rentals.
And that software tool is constantly looking for those, so they may pop up on a weekend, like, for instance, on a holiday weekend, we might have three or four pop up all of a sudden that are new ones, and so we're reaching out to them, saying, hey, one, are you, if you're in the city limits, you know, do you, you know, you'd be going through the CUP process if you're going to continue to exist, and two, you need to be, you need to be paying, just like the hotels pay.
I didn't realize that you had a program that did that.
We do.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
On another note, the, the, the city Calu Civic Center is in need of some major repairs. Do we have anything budgeted for that, and would it fall under this hotel occupancy fund for those repairs?
Potentially could. Right now, we're working through, Ashley Boyle and our engineering department are working with their staff in determining some cost elements to that. We also have some endowment funds that are related to maintenance that we may be able to utilize rather than hotel motels. So, it really kind of depends on where those totals come. I think, hopefully, that within the next couple of months, we'll have better estimates of what we think that those costs will be. So, again, I think the big story in hotel motel is that, you know, it was, I mean, COVID was weird. We just didn't know what was going on, and then we had regional effects. And so, basically, we performed better this year, certainly than we thought that we would. But we think in both budgeting revenues and expenses, prior to, at levels back to nineteen, and then, you know, on par with where our estimate is as far as revenues go for this year, we think it's a conservative approach that we'll just continue to kind of feel out as it evolves over this next year.
Can you explain a little bit on how that, you talked about that program that you have that identifies? If, so how does it identify that there, that one exists and that they're not paying properly?
So, they use multiple approaches. So, obviously, they're looking at booking sites, so Airbnb, HomeAway, any of those booking sites, FlipKey. And when we get them, so what they do is they go out and use that booking engine, look at the listing, and then they'll go on through and see, are there reviews, which would indicate a recent state? They can look at them, they have all kinds of GIS tools that they try to figure out because, you know, they don't give you addresses on there and map out, so they go all the way, you know, as granular as pictures where you can look on Google Earth from door to door to do identification that way, they cross-reference with Kirkad. So, there's, it's a big process before it gets to us. And then, once we get them, we do a lot of cross-checking too before we're reaching out to somebody saying, you know, we think you have a short-term rental. So, we also cross-reference what they give us to Kirkad to make sure ownership is correct. And then, our utility technicians are really helpful too in identifying just, does the picture match the curb to the address? Is there a water account out there? What is the water account's name? We have a multitude of sources that we can, you know, kind of back in and do our research before we're sending that information out.
Okay. We also cross-reference with the state, you know, the state collects their own hotel motel tax. And so, we also, occasionally, you'll get a payer that doesn't realize there's also a local hotel motel tax component, but they're paying the state, so we do try to match that up.
Or they think that Airbnb is taking care of that piece for them. And it is in the Airbnb contract that it's not included, but it is in such small print and it's on page thirty-something of the contract. So, you know, I feel like that those booking engines can do a little bit better at, you know, educating. Because I don't think, most people don't do it on purpose, they just don't know. So, that first contact is just education, and most of the time, it's just, they just don't know.
The first contact from the city?
Correct.
So, that's what was going to be my next question is, let's say we do find out that there's a short-term rental. They don't have a CUP, they haven't been paying hot taxes. We just go out and educate them, there's not a penalty or?
Right.
Okay.
Educate. At this point, we're not doing any large audit process on a short-term rental. We can, if we choose, and we do have those mechanisms in place that if we feel like, you know, we need to do an audit, we can certainly do that. But the education piece is first. You know, and you can usually tell from that first contact, you know, what's going on. And then, just putting them in contact with development services to make sure, do they need a CUP, do they not? And there's a lot of factors there as well.
Okay, good.
So, it's a pretty big, it's a pretty big effort right now that we're working on.
All right, thank you.
So, moving on to golf fun, again, this is another good news story. It was really a net winner coming through the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic. You know, so what we saw really was a twofold fiscal year twenty-one opportunity. We saw more play, folks felt comfortable being outside and playing golf, and it's continued to carry on in that I think, you know, we've got great exposure and hopefully gained some new players out there or returning players out to the golf course. And then, we've also seen, you know, just tightened up on the expense side. And so, you know, this is going into projections for year-end estimates. We were projecting revenues to be higher than expenditures, which is great. We did see, very pleased to see a private donation, basically a memorial. I think we had relayed to you guys here a few council meetings ago for some cart path improvements and some other, you know, site improvements there, pretty close to the pro shop. And then, we did add a new range ball cart to the facility. And I can't remember what the age of that was, but it was on its last leg.
And they were pushing it.
That was one of the minor purchases really for FY twenty-one. FY twenty-two, we are looking at making additional cart path improvements. That's one of the key feedback elements that we've received from our customers out there. We do have very narrow cart paths. And as many of you may know, when they reversed the course a number of years ago with the redesign, some of those cart paths don't always follow the best path. And so, we've tried to make some modifications so we're not having folks cutting across, you know, making their own cart paths, so to speak. So, with some new leadership over there, we've been trying to kind of remap that out. We do have a new leash truck for maintenance and then replacement of trees. Unfortunately, you know, we did lose a number of trees with the winter storm. And so, that can affect play. And so, we've got to really be thoughtful about how we go back in there and replace that vegetative stock. The additional overseeding, you know, we implemented that several years ago to both protect the grass, which is probably one of the key elements to why we saved a lot of our greens through the winter storm was that we had overseeded. A lot of other courses throughout the region struggled with that. And then, it extends our seasonal play, and so we're able to get more play throughout that winter season and ramp up earlier, you know, going into, or have a longer season going into the fall, have more winter play than we normally would have, and then also be able to jump right into the summer season. So, I think all of those factors have been helping us to really drive some revenues this year and continued on. We do still anticipate a transfer from the general fund and the hot fund to help support this effort. But again, you know, we have traditionally done that. But again, you know, we're pleased to see where revenues are exceeding expenditures this year. So, we hope that will certainly continue. As same with water and sewer rate structure, we did receive feedback from council that just nice, steady increases. And so, that's what we proposed again this year, just a general increase of a dollar to two dollar, depending on whether it's a weekend play or weekday play. But, you know, and we've done, you know, about a dollar increase over the last few years for the golf fund, so.
Let me just say one word in regard to golf. You know, in the worst of COVID, we did close the municipal course for a time. I discovered that golfing is a religion. And, but anyway, we opened it back up and went well.
Absolutely.
Well, it's really nice to see that in the red.
Yes, in the black.
In the black.
Yes.
Not in the red, and as it should be, so that's good.
And the course looks really good too, so they're doing a good job overall.
Trina, you want to hit other funds?
Yes, sir. Onto other funds, Police Special Revenue, this is a restricted revenue. These are Leo's funds, this from the State of Texas Law Enforcement Officer Standards and Education Program. Also, along with some CESE funds throughout the years. So, we are wanting to use seventeen thousand five hundred to purchase some special operations unit rifles. Another eight thousand going to the SOU ballistic equipment, and then nine thousand for technology and camera equipment. So, that all go towards training, so those funds have to be restricted to that type of activity. Down to the Municipal Court Special Revenue, this is also another restricted, these are restricted funds. And these are received fees through the court system. And they can be used for technology, court security, child safety, or truancy-related expenditures. So, a portion of that, those fees, we give to the bailiff salary. So, he's considered the security element at the court. We want to, twenty-six thousand, we're anticipating to spend on child safety or the school crossing pedestrian areas. We want to enhance those. There is a court kiosk where they can make payments outside of the building. It doesn't have to be open twenty-four hours a day, whatnot. So, that just requires some maintenance throughout the years upkeep. So, the kiosk and camera maintenance is about eight thousand dollars. And then, child safety seats, if someone is in need, you know, they aren't capable, it's getting that on their own. I believe they are, they can purchase those.
So, that's how, the individuals that they come across.
Yes, ma'am.
The police department helps with that effort.
Do they purchase those or others given to them?
They're given to them.
They are given, right.
So, again, these are all restricted funds. And basically, there are small fees that are state mandated that are put on to tickets and other elements. As you may know, the bulk of a ticket typically goes to the state, funding state elements. But these are some small pieces that are reserved for these specific type of activities. And they do, they help us, you know, do some things that then relieve some pressure off the general fund, so.
With the safety seats, can individuals refer them to them?
Curtis, do you want to speak to that?
Well, if a citizen knows of, has a neighbor that they know could use one, can they refer them?
Absolutely. Up to the police department, we've got officers that are certified safety seat inspectors. If they have an existing seat, we'll inspect that. If it's effective in any way, we replace it. If they don't have a seat, we'll get them one, get installed directly, so.
Good, thank you.
Do you check for expirations on safety seats?
They check everything. They check for tire line fractures. The class that they have to go to for that is pretty intensive. It's like, I think it's at least a week long just to get certified, to be able to inspect the safety seat, to make sure it meets the standards.
Okay, so if you get pulled over and you have a child in a safety seat, and you get, they're going to, you're going to get a ticket for speeding or whatever, do they check that seat and check for?
They're going to, they're going to take a cursory look at it to make sure that it's appropriate for the child. And if it isn't, they might comment to the driver, hey, you know, we can get you a new seat if they feel like that's appropriate. Hey, we can get you a new seat, just one has a fracture, come by the police department, we'll take a look at that for you.
So, you, what you just told me or confirmed was that I need to switch out my seventeen-year-old child safety seat.
Might be time.
Probably have an inspection.
You don't do a yearly bring your seat in and we'll check it out type thing?
Not structured like that. We have done in the past some safety seat checkups inside the community where people can come. And we've done them at Walmart before, we've done them at the hospital before. And you set it up and people come through and we check them and inspect them. That's not particularly on a yearly basis, but it is done occasionally. But anybody can just randomly, if they feel like there's someone in need or something of that nature, they can send them by.
Okay.
The school crossing pedestrian enhancements, will that, will those funds, or at least some of them, go to if text approves, I guess, the funding for the ones that we had looked at before?
Yeah, right now, it's not. That really is kind of a different program. So, this was actually a piece that was implemented through both, it's actually related to the state, but then also through county. And so, this is a little bit different allocation than what we've seen in previous years. And it's really kind of tied in, it's overall the Child Safety Fund, we've utilized most of it for child safety seats in the past. But because of this change in allocation, you know, we did recognize a need and heard council feedback on wanting to make sure that pedestrian crossings are receiving, you know, new paint, new thermoplastic that goes down, make sure the signs are updated. And so, we've got a number of them across the community. And so, this provides us an avenue because this is an eligible expense within that funding category for us to just go out there and be able to freshen those up and make sure.
For school areas.
For school areas, correct, yeah.
And how do you determine which ones get funded for that?
So, we really rely on our streets department personnel. You know, they're out there, they see those day to day. Certainly, if we get a citizen comment that comes in, then we check that out and see where that kind of falls within the ranks. But we do have, you know, on an annual basis, our street staff are taking a really hard look, particularly right before the start of school in the fall timeframe. They go out there and try to, the ones that are needing some help, get some help.
Any further questions? Okay, we're moving on to Library Memorial Funds. The Library Memorial is a special revenue, and they most times are funded primarily through the Friends of the Library. We do have some large gifts that come in throughout the year, or just whenever, really. And so, we have some proposed expenditures that we would like to utilize in this fund. The Heart of the Hills Heritage Center is still on the books. The library is in need of an HVAC system. And we are working on improving the stairs down to the River Trail, which is now going to be a library ramp down to the River Trail. Topset, some of those general fund purchases, book purchases, sixty-two thousand dollars a year. Mango Languages Learning System, eBooks, online magazines, some streaming subscriptions, twenty-one thousand for those items. Danielle has presenters come all year long, presenters for the youth and adult programs, five thousand dollars. And then, there are some window shades we like to replace at the library totaling eight thousand. So, we're working on all those.
Go ahead, on the ramp to the river, what exactly will that look like when it, if and when?
Yeah, there's an image, right? I think y'all showed me that, part of my orientation.
Yeah, so we've got a conceptual image that's out there. We've got it out for bids right now, and we have engineered the project. Essentially, it provides an ADA accessible ramp where we had the old wooden stairs that were deficient and also had several trees through, actually, some storms that happened, some of the windstorms that happened before the big winter storm. We had several trees fall on those and caused damage that basically took those stairs completely out. And so, what we have designed, because those were not necessarily ADA accessible, we've gone back in and designed basically a concrete ramp structure that will switch back down there and be able to provide access behind the library down to Tranquility Island and then obviously over to the existing River Trail area, so.
Could you possibly send that image that y'all had out to council so we can see that too?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
And can you explain a little bit about the book purchases? I mean, that's, that's an interesting number to me because they're doing away with all the books. And, I mean, even in the schools, you're not getting a locker anymore because everybody's doing it all on an iPad. So, sixty-two thousand for?
Danielle, could you respond to that?
Danielle, if you come up to the podium, we can capture it on the microphone.
So, that actually covers our entire collection. So, that's our adult collection, nonfiction and fiction, the children's collections as well and our young adult collection. So, that's all our physical materials, that's audiobooks, that's our DVDs. And there is still a huge call for print resources, although a lot of people do enjoy the electronic format. There's a lot of people that, you know, even myself, the feel of an actual book. And so, that funds our entire collection for a year.
I was going to say that when the library was remodeled and opened up, there was great hue and cry that, what'd you do with the books? You know? And that was, to me, was a failure to understand the end user in Kirk County. A lot of us older folks want to print books, you know? But I check out audiobooks there all the time, so anyway, it's a combination, but does that answer it?
Danielle, you may want to speak too, just the growth as well in our eBook program.
Yeah, we've seen a lot of growth. We actually have two platforms now. We have an Access Three Hundred and Sixty platform, which is, all that content is actually owned by us for either forever or for a period of time. There's different access platforms you can purchase, they have different price points in those. We actually joined a consortium too with the help of the Friends this past year. It's called Lone Star Digital Consortium, and it's actually the Overdrive Program, which most people that move here are more familiar with. And that actually has thirty thousand different resources that people can access. That's audiobooks, has thirty-two hundred different magazines on it, and also has close to twenty-five thousand books in audiobooks for people to use. So, that was really important, especially with COVID and the winter storm. People still have access to us twenty-four seven. So, that's a big part of the collection as well.
So, we tried to do twofold, really, you know, expand both our, you know, electronic capability going forward, but then also, you know, mindful of our local constituents and bringing in new print books as well.
Books will always be, books will always be here. I mean, for twenty years, I've heard about, you know, like, oh, you know, libraries and this and that. But libraries are a community place and people still use books, you know, that's a major form. We have patrons that they don't subscribe to internet, they don't subscribe to TV because of the cost, and their entertainment is those print books.
There's Garcia.
Oh, yeah, I think I'm sorry, I'm trying to write that down. Now, so we're talking about eBooks and we're also talking about the purchasing of the book, that funding that you have, that's for physical copies, right? So, let's say on the programs that you use, do you have to buy eBooks individually, or do you get a whole?
Well, with the consortium, we all. Well, with the consortium, we all buy content, and there's two different accessibility platforms for that. So when I buy something for our library, it gets, goes to our users first, and then it gets released to the consortium. Same thing with all the other libraries, so that our patrons' needs get meet first if it's a popular book.
Right.
I'm sorry, I lost track of your question in the middle of that.
So I was just trying to clarify that the funding, the sixty-two thousand, isn't towards eBook purchases?
Isn't towards our overdrive, or that, we have that funded on a separate line. These are all for just actual physical materials, and we still have the old-school kind of compact disc audiobooks, and that's part of that collection as well.
Okay.
Wait, you said old-school. That's what I used.
Well, actually, the cars are starting not to have the compact displayers anymore, so we're starting to see a different change in the demographic on that too.
Okay, just one other question.
Yes, sir.
I was not familiar with the mango languages learning, is that, is that for adults, is there some for children?
It's a language learning app, it's interactive, it's kind of like Duolingo or other learning platforms out there. It has seventy different languages that you can use, and as long as you have a library card, you can access that from home as well as in the library. It's a remote user app, has everything on it, Gaelic, it has Speak Like a Pirate, you can learn pirate on there. I mean, it has all kinds of different languages, and we actually used it during COVID. One of our projects was to learn some basic Spanish for librarians. They actually have a Spanish for librarians program that you can go through and learn some of that as well. So we see reasonable use on that, particularly during COVID, a lot of people picked up languages and things like that, we, a lot of use on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on library memorial or other funds?
Questions on anything else that we've talked about that we may need to circle back to?
For me, on the, it was going back to the multi-year plan for the water fund. Is staff going to propose that in an ordinance at an upcoming meeting soon this year, next year? What are we looking at?
Yeah, so, you know, based off council feedback, you know, if that is something that council is interested in, what we would anticipate is bringing back an ordinance, you know, with an exhibit similar to what this looks like. And that would be in a parallel process to your budget adoption process. So it would, obviously you will have this year's annual rate structure within your proposed fee schedule, which we've also provided a draft for you guys at your table, and that would continue to be the case for future councils as well. So they'd still be adopting an annual rate schedule. Again, this would just be a multi-year ordinance that just, again, provides some trajectory, provides some degree of where that is headed, both for the organization as well as for the customer base out there.
Now.
Did that answer your question?
It did. Now, Mike, looking at an ordinance versus a resolution, wouldn't it, couldn't we do it as a resolution? Because when an ordinance, if, I guess it determines on what the language is, depends on what the language is, wouldn't it require us to stick with that unless we amended the ordinance? Rather than if we did a resolution, we could, you know, at least give our consumers projected numbers, but not be set to that as to having to go back and amend an ordinance?
Well, a resolution would generally be a policy, and you all could certainly do that. Policy is to increase the rates on a yearly basis going forward. An ordinance is a law, and you all would lock that in to a certain extent. It's, you know, whatever you all want to do, frankly. You know, and I wrote down in my notes earlier, don't, but you, you know, it wouldn't be like you could bind council in three years, four years, whatever, out. But it, I mean, a law is a little bit more forceful than a policy, so that's how it ends.
What have councils done in general in the past?
Here?
Yeah.
I'm not aware, certainly in my tenure, that we've done anything along these lines. I mean, we've talked about it in budgets, and that's been part of the budget process, kind of a, an overarching philosophy when you all adopt a budget. But, you know, in terms of a council knowing kind of where we're going, but not a standalone policy or a standalone ordinance.
Well, we talked about within the rate study period, there are other communities that typically adopt it by ordinance, multi-year rate ordinance. And then again, you know, you're adopting your budget and your fee schedule by ordinance every year. And so, you know, if a council in the future chooses to modify that trajectory, you go back and you modify your multi-year rate study, right? And I think also you have to be cognizant that, you know, you're going to want to update that multi-year rate ordinance over time, right? Because it's, this is only four or five fiscal years out, right? And so I think it's going to be one of those things that will be revisited over time, see if it's still relevant.
Right, would there be anything wrong with this going with the resolution rather than ordinance?
There's nothing certainly legally wrong with doing that, it's just the question of a policy versus kind of a law.
What's the downside to doing a resolution?
I don't know if there's a downside, you know, it's just undoing it perhaps is a little bit easier in a resolution. Resolution is a little bit more, less, in my world, forceful. You know, I haven't, I guess, I imagine EA's got more experience, other communities doing this than here, but you know, I think it's a council's pleasure and whatever y'all are looking to do and how you're looking to make, you know, the mark of this council on this issue at this time.
Yeah, I have no problem with the multi-year rate plan, but giving council maybe a little bit of flexibility if something were to come up, rather than us having to go through the process to amend an ordinance, because that would need to go through two readings, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And set a resolution as a policy, I mean, council normally.
Policy makes more sense to me than law.
Yeah, I would consider us going with the resolution, I think setting a policy would be, would be good.
I think the idea was in the feedback we received after the multi-year, after the rate study that we completed, was to look at something multi-year so that we weren't just reinventing the wheel every year after we just spent, you know, had a professional company come out and really survey everything from what's in the ground, what's above the ground, you know, what it takes to operate the system and everything that goes into that, and what's that going to look like in the future as far as covering those costs as they grow and those things. And so just really, I think utilizing the work that they did is basically the idea behind the multi-year plan.
No, I think it's, it's good for everybody on both sides. As to whether it's a resolution or an ordinance, I guess we can decide that.
Very good, we appreciate that feedback.
Okay, wait, just a second. I mean, is there a need to do a resolution or an ordinance?
Well, again, you know, we brought this back because council had directed us, you know, throughout the spring process that we, a desire to look at the multi-year component. And so, yeah, I mean, it's really council's wish one way or another, if you want us to even put either one on.
Now, without trying to speak for staff though, just clarify, so we did instruct all, you know, come up with a multi-year plan, come up, y'all just chose an ordinance, right, out of the two basically?
We haven't chosen either one, really all we've done is put together, you know, the exhibit that would be attached, either way. So whether that's a resolution or an ordinance is totally up to city council on how y'all want to proceed.
But what I'm saying is, you say resolution or ordinance, is it necessary or wise to do one or the other? Or, you know, it's a part of, a part of the budget as we have adopted?
I think it helps set expectations. And that way, you know, staff knows, you know, from year to year where you're going. And if the public pays attention, they could know where we're going year to year. So I think setting expectations is good.
Okay, I agree. So just kind of wrapping things up, you know, next steps, again, you know, as Julie had mentioned earlier, working through kind of the last little bit of revenue forecasting, you know, the property tax rolls and certified roll, that will all factor into, you know, where we're landing on general fund and then subsequent pieces. There's great feedback today in relation to, you know, water sewer fund and the direction that's being proposed there. After that is officially filed, the presentation of the proposed budget and proposed tax rate will occur on August tenth. And then city council has their budget tax rate votes that are scheduled for August twenty-fourth and September fourteenth. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any other questions council may have, we appreciate your time this morning.
I hope I'm not overstepping. I know that Mary is here, has she had a chance to explain anything that's happened in their world?
Just that we'd, you know, we'd heard feedback that continuing to work with our partners at the state and with Tech dot, and we do have that, as you'll see within your capital budget, we do have that queued up right now within, at least for the main runway improvements. We have it queued up within FY twenty-three, which was the latest feedback from Tech dot. However, you know, I will say that if that is accelerated, we do have undesignated funds within that overall capital fund that can be utilized for our matching component. We certainly want to be able to continue to take advantage of the Tech dot match, because that's ninety percent that's out there. So I think we're well-prepared to be able to do that should Tech dot come through, and we sure hope they do.
All right.
Thank you.
Good, Mary?
That's good.
All right, good. We have a lot of people out there who are very nervous about that, so, good.
Like I said, we hope Tech dot's a good partner and comes through with what they previously promised.
We all hope so, thank you.
Okay, very good, that's all we have, Mayor.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, anything else for us for today?
Just a big, big thanks to Julie and Trina for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Sure, sure.
And departments.
Eleven oh two, we're adjourned.